Ms. Pittko, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Jacobson, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Murphy, Ms. Solari, Ms. Phillips, and Ms. Denny. I ask you to all please rise for the pledge. And Mr. Dwyer, will you lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Maxine Cannelli and Mr. Asa, and hopefully Ms. Lieber will be joining us shortly. Apologize for the late start. Student reports. We'll hear from our students from Fairfield Ward and Fairfield Ludlow. Who would like to go first?
So, we had a really great thing happen recently. Mr. Schnazoo actually won the Presidential Award of Excellence for mathematics, and so we'd all like to honor him today because that's a really great thing that's happened. We're having advisory tomorrow on Wednesday, and then we're also having our fall concert on Thursday, so everyone's looking forward to that. And then, two weeks ago as well, the Ward team got 14th place in the Yale Physics Olympics, and so that was really good for everyone who's involved for that, and also Mr. Apgar who ran it.
Last Wednesday, seniors were able to take advantage of the PSAT day for underclassmen, so they were able to take part in college visits off the school campus or workshops in our College and Career Counseling Center. Both the workshops and the visits were very productive and helpful. I know classmates that were able to travel to Fairfield U, UConn, Providence, so everyone had a great day. We have had a very exciting start to our homecoming week at Ward. Last night, we were very excited to host our senior night for girls soccer against Ridgefield at 7:00, and the boys are currently playing right now in their senior night against Darian. The boys' team is also undefeated as of right now, so we are very excited to see how the rest of the season plays out. In honor of homecoming, Ward is also having a spirit day on Thursday and a pink-out on Friday to fundraise and spread awareness for breast cancer. And lastly, we have our big homecoming football game on Friday, which is always a very spirited game for our student section, and to wrap it all up, we have our homecoming dance at 6:30 on Saturday evening for juniors and seniors.
Just state your name and your school for the record, please.
Yes, I am Lily Phillips from Fairfield Ludlow. So Ludlow is proud to introduce this year's play production, The Great Gatsby. Under the new direction of Ms. McIntosh-Newsen, the premiere is slated for this winter. Auditions were recently held, and rehearsals have begun to kick off this year's Performing Arts at Ludlow. Ludlow seniors recently submitted their applications to work as teachers assistants throughout the school. As volunteers, seniors will be able to supplement students' learning in subjects they're passionate about, so that's a really great opportunity for seniors and underclassmen alike. And just like Ward, on October 16th, we had the PSAT, and seniors also used the opportunity to participate in several post-high school planning activities. So we did do, you know, local college tours, job shadowing, post-secondary exploration, and application assistance, and that does lower a significant amount of the stress and anxiety associated with the college process for parents and students alike. And that's all. Thank you.
Just to add on to that, as I mentioned last week, Ludlow participated in a pink-out to demonstrate breast cancer awareness during the Ludlow Ward soccer game. We are proud to announce that we raised over $2,000, all of which, that will go directly to the Norma Freem Breast Cancer Center right here in Fairfield. Other news in sports, the Ludlow girls' field hockey had their senior night last night against Danbury, and they had a strong win with a final score of 1 to 0. The girls' soccer also has their senior night tomorrow where they will be facing off with Central. Yesterday, Ludlow also hosted the Unified Sports Soccer Tournament where sports teams from all across the FCI came to Ludlow to join in on the fun, and it was a really great time. And then Thursday will be our first concert that will involve the entire music department at Ludlow. It will begin at 7:30, and we're really looking forward to seeing what the various ensembles have put together over the past couple of months.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for our students? Okay, seeing none, you guys are welcome to stay, or if you want to leave and carry on with your night, we understand. So, thank you again, and we'll see you at our next meeting. Now, time for a public comment. If any members of the public would like to give comment on agenda items, we invite you to step forward now. Okay, seeing none. PTA recognition, Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, first, could I just have a show of hands as to how many PTA Board of Ed reps there are in the audience right now? Okay, great. Yeah, so every year at this meeting, we recognize the Board of Education reps for all of our school PTAs. It's usually one of the last positions that the PTAs are able to fill, but it really does serve a very valuable service of reporting back to the individual schools as to what's going on at our meetings. And with the advent of Fair TV, we've definitely seen a decline in actual physical attendance at our meetings, so to those of you who perhaps are watching, thank you very much for your service. And for those who are here, not to put you on the spot, but if you could, please come up to the microphone and just introduce yourself and the school that you represent, and thank you again for your service.
Good evening. I'm Matt O'Gurk, 287 South Benson Road. There it is. Hi, Matt O'Gurk, 287 South Benson Road. I'm here representing Sherman, and I'm happy to come here in person from time to time, so, thank you.
Hi, I'm Megan Berkowitz. I'm here representing Jennings Elementary.
They don't technically have a PTA, but I said I'd help out.
Hi, Cassandra Marshall, Holland Hill Elementary.
Thank you all for your service, and again, thank you to everybody watching at home. We appreciate your doing your due diligence from the comforts of your living room, hopefully. Miss, well, yes, an absolute thank you to those that came out in the rain. We, I'm going to give you a little foreshadowing for some of you. Board members here, how many were a Board of Ed rep at one point in your life? So, not to scare you, but...
But nobody left.
Just a little, little, you know, view into your possible future right here. Well, and our students, you know, gave a little bit of our, little heads-up on our agenda here tonight. Recognition of Fairfield Ward High School math teacher, Mr. Peter Schnazoo, for receiving the Presidential Excellence Award in Science, Mathematics, and Engineering. Mr. Cummings?
Yes, thank you. It really is a tremendous honor, not only for Mr. Schnazoo, but also for the Fairfield Public Schools, and I'm going to ask both Mr. Cavanna, the Headmaster of Ward, as well as Dr. Rasmussen, the Program Director for Secondary Mathematics, to come forward and speak, if you would mind, about Mr. Schnazoo and the award.
I'm going to let Ben handle it. I'll just hang out with Matt.
I'm Dr. Paul Rasmussen. I'm the Director of Secondary Math and Student Achievement. I'm here to introduce to the Fairfield Board of Education Pete Schnazoo for his recognition for the receipt of the Presidential Award for Excellence in Math, Science, and Engineering Teaching. Ultimately, this has been a banner year for the alumni of the Fairfield Public School System. From a Nobel Prize winner to now a Presidential Award winner, graduates of the Fairfield Public Schools have gone on to do amazing things. Pete has illustrated the quality of our schools in the past and has continued to pay it forward with his work as a teacher in the classroom. He has not only recognized with this award, along with other outstanding teachers across this country, but also recognized within this group by the committee by illustrating his work amongst this group. This recognition for his work in the classroom, especially in the realm of assessment for learning, illustrates the level of professionalism we are proud of within our system. It is my pleasure, along with Mr. Feckety, Townsend Housemaster, Mr. Cavanna, Headmaster of Fairfield Ward High School, Ms. Gottman, the interim Deputy Direct Superintendent, and Mr. Cummings Superintendent, to present Pete Schnazoo to the Board of Education for recognition of the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics, Science, and Engineering Teaching.
I thank you for such a rousing applause, and I'm honored to be here today, and I was speaking, Mr. Rasmussen asked me to come to the middle school math meeting this afternoon, and I told him a little bit about my experience, but I told him that most importantly to me, as an alum of Fairfield High School, and someone who went to Holland Hill, and then Tomlinson, and then Fairfield High School, and now coming back to Ward to teach, I'm honored to say that I feel like this award is not just for me, this is for all of my past teachers, and especially those like Joe Cron and Ray Breich who have really instilled the passion in teaching in me and have given me a love for student achievement, and just that love of the aha moment. So I'm honored to be here today, and I thank you so much for your applause. Thank you.
And we are honored to have you here, and thank you for all your work, and it really, it has been a banner, a banner month for the Fairfield Public Schools. Not that every month isn't a banner month, but to receive international and national recognition at this level is really something to be very excited about. So thank you for your work, and thank you for the example that you set for our children, for our community, and for your, our fellow staff members. If any members of the board have any questions or comments, I invite you to, seeing them? Thank you.
Thank you.
Picture?
Yeah.
There was like an accident. Was there an accident when you guys were coming here? You couldn't get around? I was stopping people from coming this way. And there is, there are about eight police cars.
That was like at 3:30 this afternoon.
What were they doing?
There was a drug stop that went awry, and the guy ended up like running out on 95, being chased by police dogs or something.
Like 10 cops.
Like he ran, he was over by Staples, and then he like ran, like to get up on 95. Yeah.
I saw that Jennifer was going to get the Riverfield PTA, so I was like, well, she can go, then I can go.
Oh.
So it was already running late, and then 95 was falling.
Yes, Jennifer just texted me, and was like, there's something wrong.
The circle. Where's Nick? Just the rain. And then it was like...
All right. Proposed middle school schedule overview. Mr. Cummings, do you have anything to say before we ask our middle school principals to come up?
Yes, I just had a couple, couple comments to make before they come up and present the proposal. First of all, I want to, as the board is aware, we've been working on this schedule now for over a year. I think that the conversations about changing the middle school schedule have been going on in the district for a number of years. The middle school schedule, as far as we can tell, the current one has been in place for about 20 years. Essentially, and the principals tonight will go into more detail around this, the schedule that we have in place struggles to meet the needs, the learning needs of our students. The middle school schedule, excuse me, stands out as the only schedule at any of the levels in Fairfield Public Schools that doesn't contain time for extended learning activities. We began this process in earnest over a year ago, beginning working with the middle school team leaders to identify some core commitments. Those core commitments have remained throughout the process. We are aware, certainly, and I might want to thank, take a moment here to thank, the Fairfield Education Association who have worked with their, with our staff to identify concerns from the teachers, to give us a good understanding of what those concerns are, and to really lay out a path for us to go forward from tonight on how to address those concerns and make the schedule work as it's going to work in the years to come. Based on the feedback that we got from teachers, and on the work that we did, and the visits that were undertaken, the research that was done, essentially for the past five months, particularly our assistant principals periodically have holed up in various offices throughout town and worked through the schedule details to make sure that the ideas that we could present and different ideas were explored, but the idea that eventually come forward, is coming forward, can work. That we are not quite done with that process, but we feel very good about what we've been able to create. But I, again, and I know I speak for the principals when I say this, without the work that they did, we would not be able to bring forward the proposal to you tonight. Just a couple things, and I feel that these need to be, oh, and one more thing on that. Now that we've essentially created the mechanics, if you want to look at it this way, we've created a skeleton around which a schedule can be created. The work that needs to go into place is fleshing that out. We need to put details in place around what the different periods will look like, particularly, I know there's concerns about the enrichment intervention period, that's the work that lies ahead for us, as well as the instructional changes, the professional development we need to provide our teachers in the months to come. And our commitment, both as a district and at the school level, is to make sure that our teachers are able to go forward, working within the new schedule. So that is where we're going forward, and again, I would turn myself, turn this over now to the principals to come up.
I'd get it on record. Mr. Cummings already laid out our agenda, so Dr. Rosetta, if you could, that's perfect. So, again, Mr. Cummings spoke to some of this, and I do want to echo on behalf of the three of us that our amazing assistant principals in Ken Seltzer, Steve DeAngelo, Amanda Kieric, and Karen Shaughnessy are in the audience tonight. We could not have done this without their in-the-trenches work to see that this is actually possible. So, why look at the middle school schedule? Mr. Cummings mentioned that that schedule is over 20 years old. We did have a scheduling committee through Dr. Banner in 2014, 2015, to look at ways that we could improve on the schedule, and at that point, we opted to departmentalize our 6th grade, and we continued on with our schedule as is with using our flex time, which is 24 minutes. Our current middle school schedule does not fully support our learning principles that are implemented, our expectations of our newly adopted curriculum, our vision of a graduate, academic expectation, and our current graduation requirements. Again, as Mr. Cummings said, and this was a big driver for us, we were really looking to provide additional learning opportunities in enrichment and extension and intervention block. Along with that, looking at increased instructional time with fewer transitions throughout the school day for the middle school child. We, I got it, thank you. As a group, we made some core commitments, and Mr. Cummings mentioned, we had a teaching team of our liaisons meet in 2018. Those team leaders or liaisons are made of, made up of teachers across various disciplines. We met with liaisons, administrators, counselors were involved to come up with our core commitments. What were some of those things that we would not bend on? Maintaining the team model, which is essential to the middle school child, providing time for interventions and enrichment opportunities, as I said, that was a big driver for us. Providing professional development to support any change in the instructional block. Try to improve that pace of the day, as I mentioned, with fewer transition, longer instructional opportunities. We wanted to base our decisions in neuroscience and educational research, have equity and accessibility in all subjects. We really felt strongly about continuing a lunch-by-grade level, and committing to our existing contractual language. With that, we wanted to, in that team model, maintain the opportunities for teachers to collaborate and keep that, again, in the team model, commitment to a home base for all students. I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. We had a second meeting with teachers. Some of those were liaisons, this would have been in spring 2018, and we included some of those teachers that served on that committee with Dr. Banner in 2014, 2015, and those teachers were, from what I'm recalling, teachers that had an interest in a scheduling head, and they were interested in making some change around our schedule.
So, the Fairfield Public Schools learning principles, you've seen these before, they were developed, as you know, by educators throughout the district a few years ago, and really, they provide, provide a foundation and guidance for all that we do in the work in the schools, but when we were going through this scheduling revision process, they really provided us with a lot of guidance. We, we think about middle school as sort of the beginning of their secondary education for the students. We're, it's setting up the stage for success as they move on to high school. These principals, as you, as you see up here, are really based on the growth mindset, taking students from where they are and moving them to the next level in their education. We already know we have a very dynamic curriculum in place at the middle level, and we really believe that the, the proposal that we're putting forward with blocks of time, longer extended periods of time, will help us meet these learning principles in a much more effective way for students than our current schedule. I just wanted to highlight some of the key words in these statements. Passionate learners. The belief that all learners are capable of success and growth. That, that ties into our thinking about having dedicated intervention time, dedicated enrichment time built into the schedule, not pulled from something else. Creating meaning. Extending knowledge. Academic and social risk-taking. We talk about healthy risk-taking at the middle level quite a bit. We talk about the social-emotional health of students quite a bit. Having time to sit, work, process through knowledge for a period of time, we believe, will actually help and enhance healthy risk-taking, but also the social-emotional health of students, and lower anxiety levels in some ways because the pace of the day will be less hectic than it is now. Inspiring self-assessment. Reflection. Adjustment and adaptation. Key words that, when we looked through research, when we were talking among ourselves as teachers and as educators, those are key pieces to middle school education. We want them to dig in, we want them to reflect, and have time to reflect on what is being presented each day, so having those longer periods, we feel, will be very helpful. You know that we have experienced some very major curricular changes nationally, coming down from the state, from the, from the national level, and they're listed on the board for you. We also included on this the Chromebook Initiative 1-to-1 that you very generously have supported at all three grade levels. So this year, for the first time, all students at the middle level are carrying around their own personal device that has really been a game changer in many of our classrooms. My own observation on that is that they are being used as a tool for instruction in some amazing ways at Fairfield Woods. But when we think about the curriculum changes that are listed on this slide, and you think about what is common among them, what underpins them, it is that they are based in inquiry learning, problem-solving, higher-order thinking, individualizing instruction in some way, small-group instruction, working with kids who need a little extra time, and of course, that additional use of technology, which can really flip the classroom. And we feel strongly that to do justice to the curriculum that we have at the middle level and to meet these standards that are embodied in these documents, we need time, dedicated time with them on a daily, you know, on a basis where they can spend time each day in a content area digging deep. So we feel it's really going to enhance our curriculum.
So, we've alluded to a little bit of the process that we've gone through so far, and this slide just outlines some of the key steps that we've taken. We started with our team leaders. We got a lot of information from them back in September of 2018. Then we developed the core commitments. This was a similar process that the high school used when they transitioned to the block schedule, and I was a housemaster at the time during that process, so I had the experience of that. And that really was a very important step of establishing those core commitments, which we reviewed with you before. Staying true to those, those guiding all of the steps in this process, making sure that any schedule that we looked at held true to those core commitments. That's what filtered out, because there are a million schedules, you can go in many different ways. We winnowed it down to 12 schedules that we were going to take a hard look at, and then also adding in the high school schedule to really review and take the next steps with. Then we developed the common questions to give us more of a scientific research base, so every time that we looked at a school or schedule, we asked the same questions. We interviewed students from our Fairfield Public Schools. We wanted to get their feedback on how their schedule was going, and then we went to some sites. We had two sites. We went to Shelton and North Branford for physical visits, and then we also had six sites that we interviewed administrators and staff via phone. In addition, got it, thank you. In addition, we brought eight teachers and two administrators to the site when we visited North Branford and Shelton, and then we discussed possible adaptations to the middle school with those staff representatives. Then we brought in parents and community members. Back in March of 2019, we gathered at Fairfield Woods Cafeteria, and we got input from the community at that time, and we also conducted a parent survey for those that were not able to attend, and we shared all of that information with you back in June to the Board of Education. And then we took the next step forward, which is really the most difficult because you're actually building the schedule. That's what staging means. So you're actually building the schedule in our student management system, Infinite Campus, and we also had a consultant working with us, and that work started this past summer. And then in addition to that, we've been sharing the information with the staff. We had a big update back, back in September, and we also had a meeting with the FEA recently. Was that Monday?
Yes.
Monday. And now we're meeting with you. So, the process continues. And to Mr. Cummings' point, we still don't have all the answers. This is a dynamic process. We are looking for the support of everyone who's involved in this process. Everyone needs to be on board as we move forward, so we still have some major questions as we look forward. And of course, as we mentioned before, we need the specifics on the impact of this schedule on a current contracts. We need to nail down the budgetary impacts. How many teachers? What are we going to need? What resources are we going to need as we move forward? Professional development? This is definitely one of the most important things. We need to make sure that teachers have all of the training that they need to feel comfortable to do this transformation to a block schedule and do it right. No matter how long we teach, it's all about the instructional strategies and what the teachers are doing with that time to help students achieve their best. So that will definitely require a lot of professional development, and the process that we went through at the high school is something that we could mirror as we move forward at the middle school level. And then the intervention and enrichment periods, we have not mapped those out specifically yet. We would like to do that in a collaborative way. Of course, we have ideas, but those will be blocked out, and more specificity, specificity will be put to those in the coming days and weeks. be put to those in the coming days and weeks. So, we've got some work to do. And you'll see in our action steps, they were already mentioned, we're working through what are the FTE and budget impacts, developing a budget around a new schedule, finalizing scheduled drafts. We have a sixth, seventh, and eighth proposed draft at the end of this presentation for you to see. We need to work through teacher drafts as well, so they can see their end of those schedules. And as we continue to echo, we need to provide the professional learning for the staff on teaching longer instructional periods. And we've just laid out some of those thoughts. This November 5th, we're going to provide through our professional development day. Our high school headmaster, Mr. Hatzis, is going to come and present with some high school staff on what their experience was in moving to longer instructional blocks and get some real-life information. We are also in the process of looking to get support from middle school teachers in neighboring districts who teach in a block schedule and what that looks like for the middle-level child. And then ongoing professional development during department and school staff meetings throughout this school year. And again, utilizing our, at least for Ludlow Middle, but within our town, our neighbors throughout town at our two high schools for ongoing professional development. And we plan to run two practice days for teachers and students in the spring of 2020. Again, collaborating with teachers to develop, between teachers and program directors and administrators, on developing offerings for enrichment and intervention periods. Again, that work would happen throughout this spring and 2020 to continue to develop those enrichment offerings by department and by school. And we need to identify our student learning needs by grade level, establish appropriate menu of intervention opportunities, along with our extension opportunities that certainly could, that enrichment could be framed around things like our Fairfield Public Schools academic expectations and those themes. Again, continued additional professional learning to support staff in those two areas of enrichment and intervention. And then throughout our SRBI process, we would be operating on a six-week rotation in that intervention process. So, we'd make a determination, does the student stay in that intervention based on data? Or is that student ready to exit the intervention and head on to enrichment? And vice versa, for those in enrichment that may now need an intervention, we would have the time for those blocks.
So, what does the day look like in this proposal? We have a finite number of minutes. We're not extending the day in any way, so it's really a matter of how we utilize the time that we're given with the students. So, where we are at this point in the proposal is to have four periods a day, each of them approximately 88 minutes. So, the core classes and the unified arts classes would be 88 minutes. And then PE and music would be backed up to an intervention and enrichment period, 44 minutes each. So, that would combine to 88. So, that would be the four periods in the day. We would start the schedule on the first day of school, and we would operate it throughout without missing a day. So, snow days wouldn't impact the order. We wouldn't want to be confusing people. So, if we were to have a snow day in one of the days, we would just pick up the next day we were in school with the day that is assigned for, you know, the periods that are assigned for that day. Of course, we want lunch, one of the most important parts of the middle school day, to be embedded, and so that they all would have lunch with their grade levels. So, all sixth and seventh and eighth graders would be eating with their grade-level partners. Homeroom would be embedded into a class period. So, one of those of the four periods would be slightly longer, and we'd have a shorter abbreviated homeroom period. Probably not the first period of the day, but we haven't really come down to that level of detail just yet. But it would be a place for us to handle some of the administrative things that typically happen in homeroom. Currently, we have about a 30-something-minute homeroom, and it's time that we feel could be much better utilized if it was connected to a core class or one of the intervention or enrichment classes. And as I already said, the intervention-enrichment piece would be opposite the PE and music period. So, each of those would be 44 minutes. So, that's the basic layout of what the schedule looks like.
And then to Dr. Rosato's point, there's a finite number of minutes in the day, so we needed to find time. So, this slide just outlines what the old minutes are for each of the areas that we're working in and what the new hours would be in the areas. So, we gained 143 hours of enrichment and intervention. So, if you look, as we were saying before about the passing time, there's 29.4 hours of passing time. So, we're capturing, recapturing that time in all of those transitions that happen in the day. That's wasted time. So, now we're recapturing it for instructional time. We're taking the minutes back from homeroom or shortening that period because there's going to be more time for connection, social-emotional learning, intervention, and enrichment in the 143 hours. So, it's just a repurposing of time and, as I mentioned before, having less time in the hallways and more time in the classroom.
Across the school year?
Yes, this is across the school year.
I mentioned sample student schedules before, but just to give you an idea, and I apologize, everything on this, many of these on this slide appear to have turned pea-green, where they look very colorful on my screen. So, apologies. But for example, we need to utilize our personnel. And when we talk about all hands on deck, particularly around interventions, using our language arts specialist, our math resource teacher, our reading teachers, those teachers that specialize in language arts, writing, math, whatever that may be. So, you will see as we go from eighth grade, seventh grade, and sixth grade, that enrichment block moves to a different slot so that we are not spreading ourselves too thin. You will see again that the intervention-enrichment block pairs in 44 minutes with PE and music, that family consumer science, tech ed, art, and health would be 88-minute classes. And then the core classes, your math class would meet every other day. So, essentially, students would be taking hypothetically on Monday, math and language arts would be on Monday, science and social studies on Tuesday, math and language arts on Wednesday. For those of you that have a high school, as you get the gist of what I'm saying. Oh, and sorry. World Language is obviously in there as well, 88 minutes every other day. And again, as I mentioned, that intervention-enrichment block, you see it has shifted in timeline and same basic layout for seventh grade. And then our sixth grade, again, intervention-enrichment block moves, again, paired with music and PE and two core area classes per day. And then the World Language is in there as well.
Do you want to do the review?
So, just to summarize, we feel strongly that the proposed schedule meets the expectations of the core commitments. We kept those forefront, along with the learning principles, to make sure we didn't veer off of the path of what's good for students in Fairfield. There is still work to be done. I'm actually very excited about that. I think this coming, this school year that we're in, once we move forward, I think November 5th is going to be a powerful PD day to begin the ball rolling. But I'm looking forward to working with teachers and other educators in the school system to design what some of these blocks are actually going to look like, so there's some meat on the bones as we move into the winter and the spring of this school year. And of course, we do need to prepare for the budget for next school year, and that happens, it's already begun happening, and will be happening throughout the fall and winter. So, we are working with HR and central office folks as well to look at our FTE, the impact on that, and what possible cost it may, you know, the impact of the cost that we may have to be talking about when we're actually in the budget season. So, those are the things that we are continuing to work on. And we thank you for your attention and certainly welcome any questions or comments you might have for us.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Peterson, is that a hand up?
Thanks so much for your presentation. As a parent of a high schooler who went through the transition from the old to the new block schedule, I definitely see what you're getting at. And clearly, something like the passing time is a resource to be mined. So, I get it from a theoretical standpoint. I do have several questions. I think that, looking over all my comments, my fundamental concern is, and I'd be interested to hear your perspective on this in terms of, you're going to have some kids who are 10 or 11 years old in some of these very long 88-minute periods, which seems to me to be a challenge, getting my sixth grader to sit down for 88 minutes is, I don't know what your thing is about how that's going to work.
Go ahead.
I'm very excited about that prospect. Most of my career was as an elementary teacher and principal, and I can bear witness to the fact that students younger than 10 or 11 can definitely be very involved and engaged in activities, learning activities and instruction, direct instruction, small group work for as long as this time for sure. As was mentioned earlier, for many years in Fairfield, our sixth-grade classes had a double block of language arts. At Fairfield Woods, I know, they bemoaned that when that was actually taken because they loved having the kids for language arts. But we brought in the World Language, which was a nice addition as well for the sixth-grade curriculum. But they loved having the kids for that double block of time and have spoken to me throughout this process that it's not only doable, but advantageous for kids. So, I can speak from personal experience that it's very, not only possible, but advantageous for kids.
No, that's great to hear. As a parent, you wonder about the fidgetiness.
I would just only add that our elementary level, our students K-5 go 90 minutes in some cases in an instructional block. I also, I think in many cases, we all think of instruction as rows and desks, and everyone's sitting for 88 minutes. I often have parents say to me, I need my son to sit in the front row. And I say, well, at Ludlow Middle, we're often teaching theater in the round. The teacher is moving, the kids often are moving in groups. So, again, it's doing that professional development and working with teachers who are currently doing much of that. But how do we instruct for 88 minutes where there is some natural movement within the lesson?
Great. One of the things that I noticed in terms of the loss of minutes, it's a lot fewer minutes allotted to music. I was wondering what the music teachers are feeling about that. Because if I'm mistaken, from six to eight, there's still a music requirement for every student, correct?
That's correct. Yes. And I think what we were looking at when we looked at the old minutes proportionally, the music had quite a few more than some of the other subject areas. So, we were looking at a rebalance at that point and trying to make sure that we were equitable across the UAs and all of the other experiences. And that's a lot of feedback that we did get from parents, was looking for increased opportunities and choice within our elective program.
I guess, and one other question that I have is about the timetable. Maybe this is a question for Mr. Cummings. It looks like you're going to be coming back with some kind of presentation for us in January with the various FTE impacts and contractual issues. Is this, so this is, you're hoping to have this for the 2021 school year?
Yes, we are. I think the big unanswered question right now, beyond the professional learning that has to take place, which we're building a process and a calendar for now, is the, ultimately, what the expectations will be for staffing and how that will fit into the greater picture of our budget expectations.
And that's not too big of a hurdle to get before January? January feels very soon, so.
No, because I think that all along, we've been, in terms of the FTE specifically, the budget, we've been kind of playing with this all year. I shouldn't say playing because it doesn't sound like we're taking it seriously. We've been working with this all through the process. As we've tried to work on the schedule and as we did different iterations of the schedule, we've been conscious of this. So, now it's a matter of, once the assistant principals were able to run the schedules with actual student loads, we can now determine what the FTE impacts will be.
Great. Thanks very much for your presentation.
Ms. Jacobson, follow Mrs. Gerber.
Hi. Thank you so much for the presentation. Sounds very exciting. I just have two quick questions. I noticed in the sample schedules, and I know it might not be final yet, was there any reason why seventh grade was chosen as the grade to not have the cores back-to-back over, say, sixth grade? I could see eighth grade just building up that stamina, but I was just curious if there was any reason, or it just worked out best that way?
I'm looking back to our assistant principals, but I think it was just laying out a draft and lunch wave.
Okay. No particular reason?
No magic to that.
Okay. And then the second question I have is, is there any thought process at this point that core course offerings would be expanded beyond what we have today?
It is possible, as far as adding different courses. It's possible. We wanted to cross this hurdle first, work through schedule, PD for staff, adjusting to the instructional minutes, and that's an option down the road.
I think there's great opportunity in the intervention-enrichment block. That needs a lot of work to be fleshed out, but I see lots of opportunity across all three middle schools to be developing a lot, a variety of different new courses that we currently don't have in place.
And then the last question was, and around the enrichment piece, do you envision that you would be offering different things by school based on culture or interests at each school site, or will they be the same? Is there a commitment either way to that, or just that's?
I don't think we've committed to it yet, but typically, the enrichment and those classes and those offerings are done around teacher passion and interest and student interest. So, I think it would technically be a little bit different. I don't think we'd be lockstep with each other in the three middle schools. But we would try to have some theme. The way that we're envisioning it right now is based around the academic expectations. So, that would establish a theme. So, we'd be focusing on the same skills within the content that we're covering.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, thank you as well for the presentation. One question I have is, do we have any sense of approximately how many middle schools in our county, in our DRG, are using a block schedule already? Like, are we kind of at the front of the line? Are we kind of in the middle? Are we bringing up the rear in terms of, you know, where other schools are? I mean, I know you talked to and, you know, reviewed 12 middle school schedules, but I wasn't clear, were those all block or were some of them different? And I'm just curious where we are.
We looked, in North Branford and Shelton were the two blocks that we found. And I think I said this at our last presentation, we looked at schedules that are similar to what we have in a seven-day period. We spoke to some schools that have a modified block. And at least in my phone calls, and again, I think I said this to you during the last presentation, in those that I spoke with, they said, we don't like our schedule. And when you figure it out and fix it, give us a call back, and we're going to steal your stuff. One of the core commitments that we found in, at least in Shelton on my visit, World Language is an elective and music is an elective. And again, in sticking to our core commitments to Fairfield and what we feel passionate and strongly about, you know, again, that was difficult in working in our assistant principals, God bless them for this, in working through that, the weeds and the work on that to know that a schedule is possible.
And I also want to say that I, for the record, I think Fairfield's at the front of the pack in so many ways. And I think in this work, I think we're out there in a very positive way. There are some locally, but I'm not sure about our particular DIRK.
Got it.
I just have one comment to that. So, in my research from the National Middle School Association, this was, this is the This We Believe document was published in 2007, and they're encouraging schools to use a flexible schedule and to move away from the 40 to 50-minute period. And their recommendation is to a 75 to 150-minute period. And the reason that they encourage that is to have more diverse instructional strategies are possible within an extended block. So, that was in 2007.
Thank you. And then one other question I had, and I don't know if you've gotten this kind of deep in the weeds on this, but it was just always an issue when my kids were in middle school, music lessons. How is that going to fit? How is that going to fit in with this? Just because I know that was always kind of a fraught topic in terms of when the music lessons and missing class time and that type of thing, so I was just curious.
That's a great question. It's one we get often, and not just music lessons, but there are many things that the students are pulled from their core instruction because that's the only time that these things can happen because our schedule is so tight and so scheduled out the way that it is. So music lessons is one of those. We haven't fleshed out exactly what that will look like, but I anticipate that coming at a different time. But even if it came from a core period that's 88 minutes and they went out for a lesson, if that had to be that way, they would still be getting a significant amount of their core class.
Right, because they wouldn't have an 88-minute lesson.
Exactly. But we're looking at options related to that, but there are many things that students are pulled for currently that I think this could help with.
I'd also just like to add, and many of you have experienced it, I mean, your walk-a-thon, your basketball bash, your author visit, all wonderful things that I wouldn't give up for anything. That enrichment intervention block is a block of time that could possibly be utilized for some of those special events without losing instructional time.
Okay, thanks. And then just one other question, sorry. And I don't know if this would maybe perhaps be through the chair to Mr. Cummings. How much professional development was utilized when we had the high school change? Do you know, or does anyone know? I'm just curious, just in terms of, well, I guess you, actually, you were at the high school at the time, yeah?
We started after the first of the year. So we had basically from January on, and then the schedule started the year after, the next school year after.
Right, because I know my son was going through senior year when that happened, and it actually was a really great, it was pretty seamless. I mean, I'm sure there were probably little glitches here and there, but overall, it seemed like it was rolled out really well, and I was just curious how much preparation. I mean, I know there was a lot in terms of sharing with parents and everything, but just.
Every faculty meeting, every department meeting, the program directors did a great job. We did a lot of in-house training, teachers training the teachers. So it was really about instructional strategies and what you do. One that sticks in my mind, because I know that was a question you asked before, sitting is the new smoking. So what that means is if you sit for too long, that's unhealthy. So you incorporate movement into the class. It was just something that really stuck with a lot of teachers. So it's those types of things of thinking about how you do instruction.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings, did you have something to add?
I just want to follow up on one of the previous responses, specifically to the music question. When we initially developed the schedule, you saw the impact on the music program. Our music teachers, though, were rightfully concerned with what had happened to the instructional minutes and have come back with a proposed addition or amendment to the schedule that we are still currently looking at, that would restore much of those minutes during the, utilize part of the intervention enrichment period. So Ms. Goddison and I met with them a couple of weeks ago. The assistant principals had been working on that, and we're still in process of working with that. But I want to just emphasize for the music teachers, and I know there's a couple here, there's a commitment to, there's a continued commitment to work with those minutes and to make them right.
Ms. Sleeper?
Hi, thanks. Just a few quick questions. Going to the block schedule won't have a curricular impact, will it? After you mentioned all the curricular changes that have taken place over the past several years, this won't change any curriculum, would it?
So we're not looking for a curriculum change, but you do have to change the implementation guide because the pace of the day is so different?
Right, so that was my next question. So you'll have to rewrite lesson plans and your guide, so that will likely have a budget impact? Would that happen over the summer, that type of work, or is that part of the professional development you're talking about, starting after the first?
Probably a combination of the two.
Just curious. Will a block schedule make common planning time easier to schedule for teachers?
We're committed to the team approach and would have collaborative time for teachers.
Awesome. And then, that's the last question. I thought our middle school had STEAM. Do we not have STEAM in middle schools?
We're full of STEAM, but we do not have STEAM.
Okay, all right then. Thanks.
But a possible enrichment opportunity.
Okay.
Ms. Jacobson?
Sorry, one class, last minute. Home room, I know, is right now 24 minutes, you had mentioned. What is it actually going down to? Or do you have an idea?
It would be tagged on to one of those 88-minute blocks. It'd be about five minutes.
Okay, so just.
There'd be a home base touch point. We currently take attendance in every class, and we're well aware there are times when things need to be handed out, we need to collect stuff, we need to have a Naviance advisor, advisee, something to that effect.
So right now, just sometimes, I know in homeroom, that does serve as what we call you guys flex time, and not every student needs that flex time every day, but it is a valuable time to, that I know even when my own were in, had to stop by and see a teacher, had to run to the library media center for something, you know, that's a valuable 20 minutes of time that kids can use. So do we envision that either, since there won't be time obviously now in homeroom, for them to have some, a little bit of flex time? Would that need to come out of either an intervention or enrichment block? And would that be okay? Or would they have to eat up something like lunch in order to maybe get some things done or hit touch base with a teacher that they might need to touch base with?
Intervention and enrichment period would be a possibility, but I'm also thinking in math class, my math teacher's going to have 88 minutes, more time, more small group, more opportunity for questions, more instructional minutes. It's possible. It's a good question, though.
Mrs. Max, Caneli?
Okay, one thing that I, first of all, thank you for the presentation. I have to say, it feels almost a little bit early because it feels like there are some major, major pieces of this that we're not finding out yet. And while we're talking about you have a lot to do yet, it almost feels like this needs to come back in December because if we're going to commit money to it, if the board is going to commit money to it in January and we're just finding out what those things are, that potentially puts the board in kind of a tough position. I'm just sort of throwing that out there time-wise. You know, in January, the board receives the budget book and are told that there needs to be, I'm completely making this up, an 8.5 FTE increase because of the new middle school schedule, and we have no idea what that is and we're being asked to support it. Right now, also, it looks like we are being asked programmatically to support an increased priority on PE. I don't see that going over well with other town bodies. So I feel like there's some significant pieces to this that we don't know yet.
Right.
And so I just raise that as a concern for, if we're just, if the board is just going to find this out in January, at the same time that we're getting to the bottom of a budget book, I'm concerned about that.
Okay. Well, I would say that we can do what we can to have it ready in December, but I would suspect that, given the amount of work that we want to do and to be able to present a full presentation, I think it probably, January would be a more realistic date to do that. I think that in terms of the budget, the primary impacts are going to be around FTE as well as some of the summer curriculum work, programmatic work that would have to be done to support it. But we're also going to look to use time during the school year, in the second half of the year, to support the building of those extension and intervention blocks. So one of the biggest issues, for example, I think, is the enrichment extension block or intervention block. We're, the presentation alluded to this, but we're collecting information now on the students that are going to be in 6th, 7th, and 8th grade next year to start building out what that will look like. Because what, for example, this does not necessarily have a budget impact, but one of our current intervention issues in the middle school is we have a very limited palette of options for students who need support in, let's pick reading. We don't come from a student-centered point of view around that. We come from a programmatic point of view. In other words, we fit the kid into the program, not the program for the kid. There's work to be done to correct that, but that's going to take a little bit of time to do that because we have a number of students to go through to make that happen. We are going to give opportunities to our staff, to the earlier question about whether we'll be doing extension enrichment activities, whether at the district level or at the school level. We really see a mashup of that, and we'll be providing opportunities for our teachers to begin to work on those things outside of school hours. We've identified some funding sources for that within the budget. So, because there was some curricular money that was not being used this summer. So we want to be able to put that forward to support the teachers in developing those things. I think that a full, to your question, I think a full portrait of what we want to accomplish is going to be, best be done in January.
Would it be possible, do you think, and again, I don't know what schedule you have planned out, would it be possible to know the basis for an FTE impact by the December meeting?
I would hope so, yes, because I'm going to need to know that.
Even the pieces, I get that there's still a lot of work to be done, but if we at least know the financial impact part well in advance.
I think that is probably the easier thing to do, and certainly Ms. Moncel will want it for the budget book because we're going to be publishing it soon after that. So on Ms. Moncel's part, I will answer definitely yes to that. But I also can commit to you that as part of the weekly update, when we have information to report, I can just report that back out to the board as part of our weekly.
Okay.
Can I follow up?
Sure.
A follow-up to Jen's point, Ms. Max and Caneli's point. There may be FTE implication, but if we're also thinking of different enrichment courses, there could be materials and supplies input as well, right? So it could be just a little bit more than just FTE possibly, especially if we're going to really think big in those areas, which I hope we are. So, thank you.
Okay, a couple of other questions. I was wondering if you could tell us a little bit more about the nature of the staff feedback that you've received. For example, I completely get your point, and thank you, Dr. Rosato, for reminding that down in the elementary school, they're doing these for longer chunks of time. But I can certainly see, I've been asked about this before, and I had said I can't imagine not revisiting math, language, in particular, on a more regular basis as opposed to every other day. And so I was wondering if you could tell us, share a little bit more about the nature of the staff feedback you've received.
So you can imagine it's mixed. There are, I can speak for the Fairfield Woods staff, there are folks there that are so excited to get going on this and others who really don't have enough information yet. As you're pointing out, we still need to flesh out some of these specifics, that they have some questions, you know, significant questions about that. But I think that much of that will come into play once we get them involved in the work itself, has already been talked about after November 5th, and they start to talk a little bit more about it with their colleagues. But I do think that there's, you know, some hesitation with any kind of a change. As has been pointed out, the schedule that we've been operating in has been in place for well over 20 years, and there is no flexibility to accomplish some of the big initiatives that are out there. So change is hard, and it's a second-order change. It's not a simple thing. This is a big thing. So people have some hesitation in some corners of the school, but others have lived through that, i.e. the 6th grade teachers, and in some cases are very supportive of this because they had some of that in place. So I think it's a bit of a mixed bag, and I think we need to continue to work with them.
And I'm curious what you say to the staff when you say, "And you're going to have these new initiatives and less time to do your job." With the reduction in seat time, I would just use, even though they're not in seats all the time, but with that reduction of seat time in those core classes to cover the same material, if not more, how do you address that?
Right, so I'm thinking the, in every case, the teachers work with a leader of the department, and again, the folks that I work with at Woods are top-notch, and I have no doubt that they will take their curriculum that they currently have, which is very good, and take a look at how they're going to pace that out over the course of the school year with these new blocks of time and what that's going to look like. So yes, the PD will be around pacing of the curriculum, the different activities that would be happening during those 88 minutes, et cetera. I think some of the research also does show that for middle schoolers, when you have time on one day and then you take a break and you come back to it, that does help that information rest with the child, helps them solidify that, and it gets brought back up on the other day when they're in there, and I think it's a very good way to go.
Perfect segue to my next question, which is, what was the nature of the science? What was the nature of the educational research that formed this schedule?
We took a look, as I mentioned before, at the This We Believe document, which was published in 2007 by the National Middle School Association. We also did extensive research in the educational reference guides and articles, and all of that information, we used, as Meg mentioned before, the neuroscience to support going to a block schedule. So it wasn't a decision that was made without doing the research, also using the research that was done at the high school level and in collaboration with some of the administrators there, and some of the documents they used to help us make our decision.
I think the neuroscience of the middle school brain would be quite interesting, and so, and yet, we've produced something, though, that's exactly like the high school, and I don't think for one second that they're identical. So what aspect of this is towards the middle school maturity, et cetera?
The big piece is the enrichment in the intervention block, which the high school doesn't have.
Right.
And they had an extra science period, which we weren't looking at entertaining. I know that they moved away from it after I moved to the middle school level, but we're focused on the intervention and the enrichment period that we have a tremendous need for. So that is within lines of the guidelines. And as I mentioned before, moving away from a 40 to 50-minute period was in the guidelines from the National Middle School Association. Oh, yes. I also have a personal example. I have a daughter at home who went from middle school and was very stressed with the pace of the day. I have a different child now because Oxford has a block schedule, and she's more organized. The pace of her day has slowed down. She's very calm at night. She doesn't yell at me anymore. It's really, it's a different experience. So just a personal anecdotal experience, the pace of the day for her has really worked. And I've spoken to some of our students who've moved up from Tomlinson, and they also say really positive things. I've even heard a cool example where they have two backpacks, an A day and a B day, so that keeps them a little bit more organized. But I'm sure we could get more anecdotes like that from the kids, because I've heard really positive things also from the teachers as well.
Okay, a couple more questions. This isn't so much a question, but just tossing it out there as a concern when we talk about the enrichment, that seems so building and particularly staff-dependent. I just ask for a sensitivity out there to being aware of equity. I appreciated what Mr. Formato said regarding that there'll be a skill base to it, and that's where we can assure a common experience, but that does concern me because obviously, we already know, I mean, I don't expect our schools to be absolutely lockstep with each other. I mean, we have different field trips at the different schools, et cetera, but that is just something that concerns me, that there's just an awareness of making sure that there is equity in that enrichment. And speaking of that, I know when we've been talking about the UA courses, that there's the discussion of, are we maintaining our current UA offerings? Is that something that's also being, I mean, sort of to the idea of new courses, is that something that's being revisited as part of that, or is this going to be a next step?
It would be a next step. So we will maintain our current programs, again, in making that adjustment to the 88-minute instructional block. We'd maintain our current programs.
Okay. And then my last question, just, again, I have to admit, that chunk of time for PE is something that's bothering me, when I just figure, you know, it's one thing if we were somehow coordinating it with lunch and it invented a recess, which I know is not possible, and I'm not advocating for it. Our sites don't really permit that, as much as I know even in high school, they could use recess. But is there any thought to doing, and of course, this is a curveball, but the high schools, for example, will have PE for half the year, of doing something where if it's on a trimester schedule, that two of them, they're in PE, and then it becomes a different type of offering?
We're not there in this draft. We did talk about the additional minutes in PE, and there is quite a group out there in support of recess, and this would just provide more movement during the week, during the year.
True. I guess, again, I look at this as, we're going to be advocating for budgetary impact where we have provided greater emphasis on phys ed and an intervention and enrichment program that we won't be able to describe and reduce time in their core classes for their education. And again, and I know, I'm sure this will all get fleshed out, but that gives me pause.
Thank you. Ms. Pico?
First, I really want to thank you for keeping the team dynamic together because that is middle school. That is so important. I wish we had it at the high school. I miss it. I miss understanding the kids and really getting to know them through other teachers' eyes. I have a couple things. How many times will the art teacher see a student in a marking period?
Forty days. Twenty? Forty days?
In other words, will this cut down the number of times? In other words, will this cut down the number of times from the original schedule?
It's two hours less than our current schedule across the year.
Okay. So, when I taught middle school for 10 years, we had a flex period, kind of like your intervention enrichment period. My worry is that you'll try to fit a whole lot into that period of time. I recently went to a NIESC, Bolton High School, and they had a period of time in their high school. And they said that over time, what happened was, everything started being scheduled during that time, and they found that kids started to wander the building, that, "Oh, I need to go see a teacher. Oh, I need to go talk to my music teacher." And it really was not being utilized. What they decided from their NIESC was that they were now going to structure it a little differently. So, I'm really kind of concerned. I get that kids need intervention and enrichment. I'm just worried that over time, it's not going to have the meaning it really needs.
That's part of our work ahead, is developing that structure. When we did the Shelton visit, they had an array of offerings that students were able to select, and it was everything from study skills to working in a greenhouse. Again, a lot based around student interest, teacher passion. Those are things we need to flesh out. But the last thing anyone at this table wants is wandering students. We need to be very cautious at the middle level, or any level, as to how we structure and schedule our kids.
I had one more, but I lost it. Sorry.
Ms. Lieber.
I'm just thinking of this now, as everyone's asking their questions. Are you guys thinking about working with high school teachers, specifically for eighth graders around the enrichment and intervention block, about things they're feeling like the middle schoolers are not coming into ninth grade prepared for, and how we could use that intervention block? I know the past two years, we've been hearing, for example, Algebra I. There's a group of kids, there's only Algebra I, there's not sort of a lead-in to Algebra I, and they're feeling like maybe there is something structured we could be doing for those students to help them be more prepared. I'm sure Algebra I's not the only area. That's just what came to mind.
So, certainly, our program directors have a great knowledge of 612 curriculum and pacing, but we have conversations eight to nine, five to six. I'll speak to Roger Ludlow middle. We recently had conversations with sixth, seventh, and eighth grade by subject area, and, you know, looking at data, where are weak areas, where are common areas where we need to see growth. So, I envision those things happening. Again, we're going to be utilizing our high school teachers in working on, how did you instructionally plan for this 88 minutes?
I hope I didn't imply in any way that our middle schoolers are not prepared for ninth grade. It was just specifically around this block.
Ms. Pico.
Now that we have one-to-one Chromebooks in all three grades, are we using like Google Classroom platform or something? Because I worry if a student misses an entire day, they've now missed a huge chunk of their language arts class. I don't want students, even students with anxiety, to feel they're falling behind.
I think that's a big part of the professional development that we went through last year, and now teachers are implementing a lot more of it. So, I think as we continue to grow, and we continue to grow the skills of the teachers and their sharing with each other, we'll see more and more of that. But it is growing every year that they're using Google Classroom.
And this isn't a question. This is just an opinion. I think two big things in here you keep mentioning that you have to come back with, I think before the board can actually consider it is definitely talking to the FEA and the FTE requirement, those are huge. I mean, in every district, those are the two things of why they haven't taken on a block scheduling. I think before any of us can make a decision, we really need to know those answers.
Mr. Dwyer.
I feel compelled to speak up for those members of the educational profession whose subject area is physical education. Someday, somebody ought to do a graph that says the hours where physical education have been cut out of the school day versus a graph showing the rise of obesity among our youth. I think physical, and I know that Mrs. Max and Cannelly values physical educators just as she values others, but I think it's always a balance. And training children to be fit and well, and find a lifetime sports activity that can keep them healthy as they raise their own children is valuable time.
Thank you. I was the PTA president at Ludlow. When they switched to the block schedule, I remember a lot of the same concerns and fears. I had one child that went through the old schedule, one child with the new schedule. The block schedule was so much better. I think from the social-emotional aspect of it, just having that block of time with a teacher in the classroom really just gives students an opportunity to connect, which really wasn't covered here. So, I'm excited about that. To Ms. Max and Cannelly's point about recess, I would love to see in your discussions, either as part of the larger PE, just to get kids outside more, even in the enrichment block, if there's opportunities to get outside. If, I know in elementary school, kids go outside to read, now that you have more time, just to be a little bit more creative. I'm not worried about our staff being able to occupy students for whatever, 80 minutes. They do it in elementary school. They do it in high school. And I'm looking forward to, you know, hearing what comes next. As my colleague said, we do want to hear the budgetary implications of it. So, as soon as we get information on that, it would be appreciated to bring it forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cummings, any last?
No, just again, great thanks to our presenters, and to our assistant principals, and to everybody who's been involved in this process, and will continue to be involved in the process.
Okay, moving on, environmental testing at school field sites. Have a quick update from Mr. Cummings.
Okay. At the board members' seats are, is the report from Jim Olson from Tye &amp; Bond that was requested at our last meeting. It's an overall summary of the testing results that have been done throughout the district since August. Before the meeting, Mr. Peterson said to me that the specific mention of Fairfield-Ludlow High School courtyard is not on here. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Olson tomorrow to update that with, update this with that. And if there's any other questions, I'll get, comment on that. And once we have this updated, we'll get this posted on the website as well.
I just want to add, it's listed very briefly in the summary of RESDEC results for playgrounds, but not in the summary.
If there's anything else on this that you saw immediately, and if the board members have any other questions on this, if you just let me know. Like I said, we'll make sure that it's as complete as we can, and before we post it online for everyone. Just a quick other updates, we are waiting, I think we are close, our priority at the schools remains the Jennings playscapes. We understand that the town is close to presenting us with a remediation plan, although we've not seen it yet. So, once we have that remediation plan, I just want to let people know what the aspects of that would be. Essentially, what has to happen is, as people are aware, the soil beneath the timbers, the landscape timbers that surround the playscapes, is the primary source of concern at both of those sites, the one to the right and left of the building. The soil itself will need to be tested. The timbers were tested, the soil itself will need to be tested. So, once the timbers are removed, the soil will have to be tested. We are hoping, we're working with Tye &amp; Bond for a quick turnaround on that. Once those results come back, and the purpose of that, by the way, is to determine if further remediation would be needed. But once we have an extent of, or an understanding of what the extent of remediation would be, we'd get a report on what that would be. We would remediate the soil, if it's removal of the soil, these are all ifs, please, these are all ifs. But if it's the removal of the soil, those types of things, we would then go through the remediation plan as quickly as possible, and then return the playscapes to the schools. We probably are going to get work in, to get one done, and then move to the other, so we can at least get one playscape done and back, rather than wait for two to come back at once. The other aspect of that, though, of course, is we have committed, and we remain committed to the fact that this testing, the testing in any type of remediation plan would happen outside of school hours. So, we're going to limit our work to either weekends or days off, depending on the scope of the remediation plans. So, that will perhaps, you know, we're not going to do this while the kids are in school. So, that's going to become, you know, that will slightly delay the work we do, but that's in the interest of both our community's interests, but also, obviously, clearly, most importantly, the safety of the students. So, that's where we are with the Jennings playscapes. And I think that's pretty much what I have for tonight. Any questions?
Ms. Pico.
So, I just want to be clear. We don't actually have any remediation plans for any of the sites yet.
When we have that, I will make sure that that is shared.
And it's up to the town to decide.
The town is working on those with Tye &amp; Bond, and then they will bring them to us. And with any, as we've discussed at our meetings, any remediation plans will be reviewed by Mr. Papa George and myself before going forward.
Okay. Ms. Raisa.
Yeah, Mr. Cummings, just really quick, on the back page, second page here, down towards the bottom, just above playgrounds, a 95% upper confidence level. Is that referring to what they mentioned with these new recreational standards?
No, I do not believe, this was a standard that's been in place. It has been used at different fields. I believe that this standard was put in place and used at the Sherman soccer field, for example, was one example of that.
Okay, because something came out recently from the town, saying that they have the new recreational standards, and I was just trying to look through here and see if, did you catch that in here at any?
I did not see that in here.
Because, because in here, the only reason I asked was because they mentioned Sherman, Riverfield, and Ward. And I know Riverfield, we touched on at a previous meeting, that area that was cordoned off. And I was just wondering if they were using that new recreational standard. Sorry if I'm confused.
No, I believe they're using that 95% standard. You mentioned Ward, that was related to that one site that was found at Ward, but then they used that 95% standard.
Okay. So, is Riverfield still closed off?
My understanding is Riverfield, I learned today, Riverfield is opened.
It is open?
The town opened it.
Okay. And then, just one other question for Mr. Olson, just in case it pertains to us, if you could just note, I'm just curious, with regards to those recreational standards, because they do apparently apply to fields, I'm just curious if he could get us an answer on, at the DPH level, in order to get those regulations changed, I'm just curious, was that it on an individual level, or did that go before a panel of experts at the state level? Just curious if you could get that answer.
I just want to read this back to you. Where standards changed, when you mean individual, when you say individual level?
Yeah, so like, was it one person at DPH that was able to make that determination?
By a single person?
Because it seems like this is something new. So, I was just curious, from a public health aspect, if that went before a panel of experts at the state level, before they issued those new standards, or if that was just one person at the state saying, "We can do this."
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Dwyer.
I noticed on the town website that has all of these various issues and documents, that they had a chart, a table, that listed all of the sites tested in the current status. And then there's a chart in this document, and whenever there's kind of two different documents, it's always important to make sure that one is conformed to the other, because one might have been created in one day, and then four days later, more information came out, and then there's another document. And so, I think it's very important for our staff to work with the town and make sure that both public documents conform one to the other.
I actually have a follow-up to his. When we were presented with a number of elementary schools, one of the schools that I specifically asked about was Sherman Elementary School, and I, pardon me, I don't remember who the presenter was, but they said that it didn't exceed. And now I'm looking at our chart, and it's saying, back of page two, Sherman Elementary School, one soccer field, one softball field, PAH has slightly exceeded the RESDEC. So, now I'm not sure if it, I got to go look at the town website, and I...
Well, if I can continue.
Yeah.
Having done more than a few of these things in the 40 buildings or so that I've renovated, each test almost suggests that you have to hire me back to do another test, and a third test. And our presenter at the last meeting mentioned about a multi-step process. And so, it does not surprise me if some document comes out with one recommendation, and then upon further testing, find something different. And that's, I think, very important for us to keep them up to date and conformed, because that's the nature of environmental testing. The, I did have a second comment that I wanted to make, for getting more involved in that. It'll come to me.
Ms. Lieber, did you have your hand up?
I was going to ask for confirmation that Jennings was our only playscape that's currently closed, but on page three, it looks like there are several playgrounds with exceedance above the RESDEC, which seems like new information.
No, this isn't new information. This was information that was provided, and we talked about, you're looking at that bulleted list at the top of the third page?
Yeah.
Yeah. Those were playscapes we've talked about, and have addressed through either the remediation method of the mulch, or, well, actually, all of it was remediation levels of the mulch.
Okay, all right. So, Jennings is our only playscape that's currently closed. Has any thought been given to whether there's some sort of temporary solution for that school? As if we're only going to be remediating on weekends potentially, and just thinking about Gould Manor, where it's 10 days of remediation, best-case scenario is that's five more weeks, even once remediation starts. That poor community has obviously been waiting a pretty long time for their kids to have a playscape.
I don't know. First of all, I don't think that Gould Manor and Jennings are equitable or equate with terms of the level of what will be required, even given the square footage of the space. But I'm not sure what you mean by, I think you said alternate?
If there's any sort of like temporary structure, is that something that...
I think it would be difficult to ensure any safety on any type of temporary structure.
All right.
Present other challenges.
So, we don't have any time really for Jennings. I mean, I know one option that the school just could, well, Jennings is tough, because the town and the school just are working together on that site. If we wanted to hire somebody else besides Red to do the remediation, that would be an option, but it would need to go out to bid.
That's right.
So, by the time it goes out to bid, hopefully, we would have Red doing the work.
Right.
So, it's really no time savings by looking for an alternative.
I remembered the second comment.
Mr. Dwyer.
To follow up Mr. Ace's comment, I believe, that at the last meeting, we had a parent come forward and suggest that we should meet a certain regulation that, in his mind, should be met. The person from Tye &amp; Bond was saying, the only one that he has at the moment is the residential standard. And then a couple of weeks later, as Mr. Ace pointed out, the state issued new recreation standards for the Fairfield project. They're not statewide, as I understand it. They're for the Fairfield project. This committee that's being put together, the Environmental Committee, whatever it's called, it may be interesting to have that group of citizens look and say, when we come across this kind of an issue, whether it's at a school site or a town site, what is the standard, and who should we look to for that standard? Because this board has generally tried, especially when it comes to scientific or technical advice, has generally looked to some outside body for what is the standard, rather than, like, say, this board try to create it in each instance. But it's an important question, as to what is the standard that we're trying to reach to, which perhaps that Citizens Committee would be able to be best able to look at.
Ms. Raisa.
Just for clarification, what are you talking about, about an environmental committee?
I believe there was a proposal by the first selectman.
I thought that didn't pass, like, I thought that didn't go anywhere. Didn't that go like to the RTM and it like died or something?
No action was taken, but that doesn't mean that it won't, in the future, be...
Okay, so just to be clear, there's no, there's no current...
Not at the moment, but if, but if it does get...
Sorry, I was just, I just wanted to clear up any confusion there, because I'm not aware of any environmental committee.
Yeah, you're correct. I, that's a good clarification. I, that's a good clarification. I suspect that because of the issues on, around this issue, that that's an idea that eventually will be worked out and eventually created, but you don't know.
There was an update sent out townwide that there was a standard, as you said, Mr. Dwyer, that the town asked for. I just want, there was some question as to whether or not the school district asked for it. We addressed that?
School district did not, school district did not ask for that.
Ms. Jacobson.
So, is Riverfield the only one that was opened, and was that based on this new standard?
No.
Because I don't remember that being in the notice of that.
Riverfield was opened based on this ninety-five percent standard that Mr. Asa mentioned in his question on that second page of this.
So these new, yeah, so these new recreational standards haven't actually resulted in anything being different at this point?
Uh, no.
On our end?
On our end, they have not.
Okay, thank you.
And according to the update, the town was still looking at it, just for the board. I did reach out to the first selectmen, Mr. Clary, and Mr. Carey, just for, you know, please to let us know if they have reached any decision on how they're planning on using that standard, and have not gotten any guidance on that yet. Ms. Pitco.
Is this Ty and Bond report gonna be up on the school's website, the town's website? I don't know if there's any copies in the back.
Once I have those, there's a couple corrections added to it, I will, we will post it on the school website.
Okay.
Any other questions on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none. Move on to the approval of the CDC Tobacco Survey for FLHS, grades nine through twelve. Recommend a motion at the Board of Education. CDC Tobacco Survey for FLH grades nine through twelve. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Leeper. A couple of questions came up at the last meeting that Ms. Goddismann sent to us via email. There was a question about the compensation to the school district. Just for the record, it's $500 that the school district will receive for, if we approve this, for the students taking the survey. We will receive payment four to six weeks after the survey is taken. Ideally, the money will be used to support the topics covered by the survey. The survey will take twenty-five minutes to complete. That was another question. Five minutes for the intro, and about twenty minutes for completion. If anybody has any other questions? Mrs. Max Canelli?
Just briefly, this has come up in the past regarding surveys of a personal nature like this, is that, is there, are staff instructed to have any type of debrief afterward, if in the course of answering the questions, it prompts, it could be curricula-related questions, or not, but I just toss that out there as a consideration for staff?
I think you're referring to, and I want to make clear, that if, in the course, that sometimes when students engage in something like this, it prompts other issues? Yes. That is something, that's a standard protocol we talk about with staff. And related to a survey or not, as those issues come up.
Right, so the point is if they're...
The staff will have to direct students appropriately.
If they're answering a question about vaping, and it makes a student want to say, "Well, wait a minute, but I've heard this," just that there will be time allotted to that, it would be a shame to lose that opportunity, is what I'm saying.
Yes, that's right.
Any other questions? This is a voting item. Any members of the public like to come and speak to this? Just this, this agenda item, just... Seeing none, back to the board, all in favor. Ms. Pitco, Ms. Leeper, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Max Canelli, and Mr. Peterson, motion passes nine zero. Approval of the BOE handbook, did the Board of Education approve the BOE handbook? Can I have a motion? Mr. Dwyer, seconded by Ms. Pitco. Mrs. Max Canelli, any comments?
Um, no. I didn't receive, aside from hearing from you, Mrs. Vitale, I didn't receive any other questions in the two weeks since this was handed out, so I don't know if I'm anticipating any questions right now. Oh, look at that.
Mr. Asa.
I just want to say thank you for all your hard work.
You set me up.
Well, my questions, I had some more acronyms that I was just curious if the committee had talked about at all. How do I say this? Didn't want to talk about acronyms, and I'm not necessarily making a motion, but DBT, SRBI, DIP, SRO, CLC, PPT, IEP, and just to get the board's feeling if any of those acronyms maybe valuable to add?
I saw a little bit of the buzz during the Ty and Bond discussion was my realizing, and I completely own this, I forgot to bring it up with the policy committee. And so what I would like to do, because I would like a vote to be taken tonight, is that I'm going to request that it not get printed, and we will address it in the future, and may bring forward an addendum of additional issues, but I did want the vote to go forward tonight, out of deference to our retiring member, but to your point, Mrs. Vitale, all three of us are in agreement that you raised some very good points, especially some of those acronyms should be included, and I dropped the ball.
And I am not looking to hold up the vote tonight, and maybe these acronyms do not need to be included, but I just wanted to throw them out there for any potentially new board members. I also, just the vision of the graduate, copy on that, was my other comment, and that was really, anybody else have any questions or comments before we go to the public?
Mr. Dwyer?
I too would like to thank, but more importantly, thank the entire board, who was given an opportunity to say, "Is this handbook important?" And this new board could have easily said, "I don't think so." So I appreciate all of the board members who said, "No, it's worth looking at," and the policy committee's time to do the due diligence to bring it forward. Mrs. Max and Canelli mentioned that this is a helpful guide to board members. I think there's two other purposes. One, the public sometimes isn't quite sure how we operate and under what rules, and they don't have the time to go through all of the state laws and policies and bylaws and standard protocols that we do. And so in one place, the public can see an explanation for why we operate in the way we do. And then, most importantly, it's for future board members who are thinking of running for office. They can read in one place what they're getting into. So I think there are multiple purposes, and I thank the board for moving it forward and hopefully acting on it tonight.
Mrs. Max Canelli?
And just one, well, I assume maybe, one final brief comment, is I do want to thank Ms. Jacobson and Mr. Peterson for the time that they put into this. It was a very thorough going over of this repeatedly, as attested to, this is just, I have two binders like this of drafts of this handbook, as we really went through it thoroughly, and very much vested in the process of making this a useful document, to Mr. Dwyer's point, so I just want to thank their work.
Ms. Jacobson.
And just piggybacking on Mrs. Max and Canelli's point, I just want to thank the staff that helped go through all of those drafts for us, and the time that it took to do that in repeated times, so thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the public. If any members of the public would like to speak to the handbook, please come forward. Okay, back to the board, all in favor. Ms. Pitco, Ms. Leeper, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Max Canelli, Mr. Peterson, motion passes nine zero. Thank you to the committee, and excited that we have a new handbook for our new board members. First reading of policy 1300.2, relocation notice, accessibility for disabled. Ms. Max Canelli?
In the course of getting all of the policies set for the new website, Ms. Brown and Ms. Tozo, in with, working with Ms. Deasy, is going through policy by policy, and this change here is simply a reflection that it needed to be updated, and that we prefer to put in language that wouldn't have to be changed if we ever have staffing changes in the future. So this was not driven by anything other than a reflection that, as it was, it was inaccurate, and now it's something that can go forward again regardless of staffing changes.
Does anybody have any questions about this? Okay, thank you. Approval of minutes, did the Board of Education approve the September 24th, 2019 regular meeting minutes? Motion, Ms. Pitco, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. Any discussion? All in favor? Ms. Pitco, Ms. Leeper, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Ms. Jacobson, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Asa, all opposed. Abstentions, Mrs. Max Canelli, motion passes eight zero one. Superintendent's report, Mr. Cummings, you're up.
Okay, thank you. As was alluded to earlier tonight, we, the central office staff, the building principals, our department, program directors, and curriculum liaisons, people throughout the school system are beginning their budget development. We are looking to bring that forward. We begin our central office meetings essentially on Thursday. Budgets are starting to become due in central office this week. We are, as the board is well aware, and has been discussed in the last couple of meetings, we are well aware of the current budget drivers, and we are looking to identify others as we go forward, including related to tonight's presentation on the middle school schedule. One of our objectives, based, or response to past concerns, is to make sure that the board is informed along the way of processes that could have any impact, not only on budget, but certainly on things like schedule, staffing, and anything that was going to impact the instructional program at the Fairfield Public Schools. So we are committed to working to continually improve our communication with the board and with the public around those things, and tonight's presentation was certainly part of that. Again, before I move off it, I do want to thank, well, I want to thank the amount of work that's gone into this by our principals, our assistant principals. Again, thank you to the FEA for the work that they've done to provide us with further information, and reemphasize our commitment to flushing out those details that's been discussed tonight. We have, we're not ever, ever going to send our staff into a situation to which we have not prepared them. We're never going to do that. And the last thing I want to talk about, or the second to last thing I want to talk about is, we are, I've started to work with the principals, I've been visiting the schools, started to visit the schools. We are conducting some rather informal classroom walkthroughs, essentially in support of what the school principals and their teams have identified in their school improvement planning. We visit classrooms, we look at the initiatives that the teachers and the principals have put into place, simply for the idea of providing feedback. It's always important to remember, in any organization, but particularly in one that's about learning, that our work is about improving learning, and improving not only the learning of our students, obviously, but also the learning of the professionals involved. And so how do we provide feedback? How do we give feedback to each other? How do we ask the meaningful questions that result in the positive changes? So that's really work we've engaged in, and I, you know, personally, it's, without exaggeration, it's the best part of the job. I'm not sure that all the principals agree, but I love it. But it really is, it's just really valuable to be out there in the classrooms, and I appreciate the principals for having me come out. And finally, I do want to say, this is, I've begun my fifth year in the Fairfield Public Schools, and a constant source of wisdom and guidance, formally and informally, has been Mr. Dwyer, and I just want to thank him personally. I want to thank him on behalf of the staff of the Fairfield Public Schools, because he has always been an articulate, well-versed, and studied proponent of public education. And no matter the meeting, no matter the subject, his appreciation for the staff, the efforts of the staff, his appreciation for the work that the educators go through, and the diligence with which they approach their work and carry it out, has always stuck with all of us. And so on behalf of the employees of the Fairfield Public Schools, I want to say thank you and wish you absolutely well. So thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Cummings?
No, that was it. I always try to end on a good note.
Always good to end on a good note.
Yes.
Mrs. Max Canelli?
Just as a follow-up to the budget preparation manual, something we had been talking about, and which were part of your goals, was setting out this idea of a five-year, long-term, specific budget goal, of how you see the passage of the next five years and the commitments of the district. Is that something we're going to be seeing more in January, or is that, how do you see the rollout of that?
I think you'll see, I would say that you'll see glimpses of that, but it'd be difficult to do that without the district improvement plan. My expectation would be that when, as we go through the district improvement plan process through the spring, and then, you know, present it to the board for adoption in late spring, summer, early summer, that would be part of the plan. I want that as part of the plan.
Thank you.
Any other comments from Mr. Cummings? Okay, committee reports? Ms. Pitco, sorry.
So, giving the SEPTA report on Wednesday, October 30th, at 7:30 at McKinley School Library. It's election time. SEPTA meets the Board of Education Candidates Forum. There'll be a moderated forum with the six Fairfield candidates to learn about their positions, in particular, in terms of special education. There is babysitting available, childcare available for members. If you need childcare, pre-register by 1028president@fairfieldsepta.org. This Saturday, October 26th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., SEPTA's having its Halloween Hijinks at Double Up Dance Studio at their new location at Black Rock Turnpike. It's $10 per child or $30 per family, and go to the SEPTA website to pre-register. SEPTA Teen Night, our longest-running program. SEPTA Teen Night welcomes teens ages middle school and up to meet each month for supervised socializing and fun. It meets monthly at the Fairfield YMCA on the Old Polish Road from 7:00 to 8:30. The next SEPTA Teen Night is 1025, so this Friday. You must register. Once again, go to the SEPTA website to register. Wednesday, October 23rd, at 6:30 p.m., Best Buddies Family Information Night at Fairfield Ward High School. On October 29th, at 6:30 p.m. at Fairfield Ward High School, Transition 101, Preparing Students with Disabilities for Success After High School. Fairfield Public Schools is sponsoring a workshop by the Connecticut Parent Advocacy Center. This presentation will offer an overview of the secondary transition process for students who receive special education services. Participants will learn about transition planning, including the value of student participation, legal requirements, and transition planning in the IEP. Registration is required, and they can also, they can call 860-739-3089. And that's it.
Any other committee reports? Roger Sherman, Building Committee met tonight, so I don't have anything to put that. PT Council met, it was very nice, the last meeting, each school shared what they love about their school, so it was a positive experience. Mrs. Max Canelli was there promoting Odyssey of the Mind, and she was late today because of visiting Riverfield, so I am excited to know that that presentation, it, you know, generated some interest. Just, not really a committee report, but the, we went in front of the Board of Selectmen and the RTM yesterday regarding the maintenance facility. The Board of Selectmen passed. RTM seemed to be supportive, expressed some concerns about move-forward cost, the increase in the rent, but overall, the feedback has been positive. And it will be up to the RTM for a vote on the 28th. Mr. Peterson?
Sorry, I should have mentioned, so, the Board of Finance meeting last night, largely on fill pile issues, no real education impact, but I did want to mention that next week, on the 29th, will be the BOF's Capital Planning Workshop, which will absolutely relate to us. So, not a fill pile issue, but an important issue for education.
Thank you. Open board comment? Well, Mr. Dwyer, I don't think that you really thought that you were going to make it through this meeting without us recognizing that, at least for this term, this may be your last meeting serving on the Fairfield Board of Education. And I want to thank you... And I want to thank you as the current board chair, that you've been just such a source of guidance for me, as I've assumed this position, but as a parent who's had children in the school district since 2002, a good portion of which you were the chair of the Board of Education, I thank you for the positive impact that you, the thousands of children, their lives are better because of your guidance. I started to go back and just think about some of the things that happened under your leadership, building projects, Riverfield, Fairfield Elementary School, Holland Hill, Sherman Phase III, the seed mine from Mill Hill. You represent us on Fairfield Cares for so many years, concerned about the social-emotional learning of our students. You've been a vocal advocate for our budgets, for our teachers, for our children, through, in front of every town body. And you've seen this board, well, not this board, but past boards. You've been chair of some very contentious boards.
Interesting times.
Interesting times. You've helped hire two new superintendents, and I know we're a valuable asset to Dr. Tidal as he was here. So, I want to thank you, and that's really it. And I'm going to invite you to say a few words if you would like.
I'm going to resist the temptation to give any final parting advice, comments. If you want any, you're going to have to buy me a beer somewhere, and then I'll talk. Over the course of time, I kept each meeting in its own file, and those included some notes on the agendas and comments like this, that, and the other thing, so that none of you think that I'm holding on to this for some future purpose. I took the 11 cartons of material that I have and brought them to Ms. Brown, who then threw them into their great big bin of a shredder, and so they're going to be confetti somewhere, someplace, so that they're preserved and from future inspection. I really only have seven thank yous. One to Ms. Brown, six years was a long time to be chair. There's a lot of staff who do work in the district, but you keep the trains moving on time, and you kept me on schedule and on task. So, I thank you for your particular role. We often take credit for the fine work the Fairfield Public Schools do. The credit really belongs to the students whose performance we celebrate, whether it's in the classroom, or whether it's in clubs and activities, on the sports field, or just representing us in front of community organizations. So, I thank them. Mr. Cummings did note that I have been a strong supporter of the staff, and I know you to be a dedicated group of people who care deeply about the individual education of each student. And so, I say staff, because while focus oftentimes is on the teaching staff, it's the custodians who maintain the buildings, it's the secretaries, it's the administrators, the IT, the paraprofessionals, the special ed trainers, all of them contribute to the atmosphere that we call Fairfield Public Schools. The parents certainly have been strong advocates, and we thank them for that, I thank them for that. And the members of the community, whether they're in elective office or not, who have consistently supported this district in the last eight years, I thank them for that. And one last, two last groups. The last group is strangers. I'm sure it's happened to each of you, but I'll be in Duchess, or I'll be buying gas, or I'll be somewhere, and a stranger will walk up to me and say, "You're on the Board of Education." And I get ready for, now what's this all about? And they've only come to me to say one thing, "Thank you for your service." And so, it's those strangers who I do not know, never knew before, don't know since, who recognize the work that collectively we do, and they just happen to voice that through me, and I'm sure that they voiced that as they've talked to each of you at different times. And lastly, to my family, who have, my wife frequently jokes and says I flunked retirement, because as soon as I retired from the YMCA, I served on this board. And so, that's time away from the family, whether it's my spouse, whether it's my two children, whether it's my two grandchildren. And so, that's the final group that I, of people, my family members, that I would like to thank. And of course, to the 20-odd members of the Board of Education who I served with, yes, some during interesting times, but I still thank all of them. Thank you.
So, Phil, we pitched in, and being that you're going to have Tuesday night free now, we got you a little something that maybe you can take your wife out to dinner.
So, she may be tuning in here, so she may have already started to pick out the restroom, so.
She already did.
Oh, she did. So, I can't use this as a holiday gift to her.
Oh, no, no.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate her sacrifice as well. So, we, you know, we wish you luck in the next chapter, and enjoy it. Enjoy the time with your family. All right, back to the agenda. Public comment? Any members of the public like to come forward and speak to agenda items?
Melissa Travis, 270 Ward Terrace. I have a first grader at Jennings, and I just want to thank you for addressing the fact that the playground is not open there, and it is a very big deal to us, so I just want to make sure that the board is aware, that even though it doesn't sound like a big deal, it's a playground, it's the only thing our kids have at Jennings to play in. The area around the playground is very small, it's a very small area, so the summer was very rough. Not only did they not have an area to play in, they didn't have a playground, they don't have air conditioning. So, I hope that we continue to push the town to come to a solution on giving us our play area back. And even though we can't have a temporary structure, maybe some thought to giving them some equipment, such as kickballs, bases, things like that, that they can actually take outside and have some constructive play in. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Bonnie Rotelli, 1280 Merritt Street, also District 4 RTM. I, sorry, I missed the last Board of Ed meeting, I was at the RTM meeting, and I was watching the environmental testing updates in the Tyne Bond, and it was confusing at best. There seems to be a reluctance from Tyne Bond at that meeting to give any kind of commitment to recommendations. And now, tonight, I'm hearing that it's the town who's going to make the decision on the remediations, and not the Board of Ed, after I thought the superintendent in the Board of Ed decided to test the playgrounds out of an abundance of caution, because I thought the town really didn't want to do that. And now, the, now since that meeting, we heard that the town requested new recreational standards from the state, which came out, even though, I don't know when that was noticed or at what meeting that was voted on, there was no public input, as far as I know. And it seems strange, in the middle of this entire sort of fill pile scandal, to just be getting new regulations from the state for just the town of Fairfield. It still brings Stratfield's playground above any residential level, so I'm still asking that the board do something about the remediation of Stratfield. And this whole thing just seems beyond confusing. We need to get some clarity on these playgrounds, on the remediation, on who is recommending and who's responsible for making these decisions. And I'd just like to, instead of getting caught up in the muck of everything, we just need some common sense, all right? We found these exceedances, we know now whether or not it was fill pile-related or not, we have an obligation to fix these things, and we just need to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, good evening. My name's Greg Bosch. I live at 470 Jackman. The last two times I've appeared before this board, I've spoken about Stratfield Elementary School, which has the most polluted playground in our school district when compared to the applicable standard. Tonight, I'm here to talk about the town's new soil remediation standard, which was released last Thursday. This is to say, I'm speaking to you about Stratfield, but all of our contaminated school fields, playgrounds, and parks. Title 22A-133K describes the risk analysis calculations that are performed to determine permissible levels of a given contaminant. The formulas are laid out for anyone to read on page 11. It's simple, four-function math, using variables for ingestion rates, body weights, days of exposure per year, and risk tolerance. If you do the math and use the values prescribed by the regulations, you'll see why only one part per million of benzoyl pyrene is permissible under the residential standard. You can also see why this chemical is so harmful, that even Connecticut's industrial standard permits only one part per million. Therefore, how is it that under our new standard, four parts per million of benzoyl pyrene is permissible? The answer is because the variables have been changed. And to explain the changes, I've created three signs. These are proposals for you to consider hanging at our impacted school fields if you insist on using this new standard. Some people might think I'm joking, I am not. The first one reads, "Wash your hands after playing here. Carcinogens present in soil are harmful if ingested." This is because the author of this new standard cuts the ingestion rate for children and adults in half, as compared to deep regulations. The second one reads, "Must be 108 pounds to play at this playground. Carcinogens in soil are more harmful to smaller children." This is because the author of the report triples the body weight of our children from 33 pounds, as prescribed by deep regulations, to 108. My daughter weighs 40. And the third sign reads, "Limit your time to limit your exposure. Carcinogens present in soil. Do not use this playground more than 180 days per year." This is because the author of the new standard has assumed that our children can tolerate larger quantities of contamination, because they don't play on the playground every day. This board didn't ask for a new standard. Ms. Vitale's made that clear here this evening. This board needs to reject the use of it and return to the deep regulations that prescribe the use of RDEC for schools, playgrounds, and fields within its jurisdiction. That's your responsibility, to follow the regulations, not ask for an alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public like to say a comment?
Can this not be my three minutes? Because I would like to thank Mr. Dwyer as well. Not part of my three minutes. As a teacher, I'll never forget last year at your convocation, and your advising us to never forget that one student. It's always stuck with me, and it's been, as a resident, as a teacher, I, we will miss you greatly. So, I just wanted to say that, and hope that's not my three minutes, please. Okay? Because I know you got me on the clock.
It's up to the chair.
Okay. Frank Sahigan, 20 Chelsea Street, and a Woods Middle School teacher. And I want to comment on the proposed new middle school schedule. First, I'd like to say I have the utmost of respect for Mr. Cummings and the three principals you heard from this evening, and their willingness to engage in conversation. So, what I'm about to say, I've already had the opportunity to discuss at length with Mr. Cummings and Dr. Rosato, my principal. The presentation you saw tonight from three middle school principals posits that the current schedule doesn't fully support the FPS learning principles and the expectations of a new curriculum, and doesn't adequately meet the needs of all students, struggling learners on the one end, enrichment on the other, and will calm the day down. It was proposed that an 88-minute class period is supported by research, but I'd argue that the research is far from conclusive. And if true, why aren't more schools already down this path? I don't think we need to be the pilot on this. From my experience, I believe it's not conducive for middle schoolers and believe the need of continuity on the daily instruction. What's appropriate for high school, I don't think necessarily translate down to middle school. You saw a review process that was employed, that among other things, they interviewed high school students, held community conversation, conducted a parent survey. What was glaringly and disappointingly absent is an in-depth conversation with the best sources available, the greatest stakeholders, the middle school staff. You saw that information was gathered from team liaisons, which I can assure you is far from comprehensive, and the next time there was meaningful interaction with the staff at large, wasn't until September, when we came back from summer vacation, to a presentation that laid out what the plan was. Needless to say, there was much rumbling behind the scenes. Since many of us were frankly surprised to hear that this plan would be put in place for the next school year, the FEA decided to create its own informal survey. 262 middle school staff, and less than a week, we heard from 186, 70%. We had an opportunity yesterday to present these findings to Mr. Cummings and the three principals, among other central office staff. Since my time is limited, I will summarize it briefly. When asked which best characterized their opinion about the proposed schedule, only 14% said they were for the change, and thought it would be an improvement. Another 15% said they were in favor of the change, but didn't think we'd be ready. 31% were absolutely against it, and 40% said they were still open to change, but have too many unanswered questions. While some are encouraged by these numbers, I would argue differently, and state that's far from a buy-in. Another question was centered around the elimination of homeroom. Only one-third of the staff thought that was a good idea. And you noticed, you didn't see that on this particular schedule, and now it's going to be incorporated somewhere in this intervention enrichment block. Among concerns were the comments most voiced around the block of intervention enrichment, and not having a clear understanding of what that would look like. Although we're being assured it won't end up looking like a study hall, many of us cannot envision it becoming anything but that. You heard an awful lot of things that need to be fleshed out. Well, that's very concerning. Going from five periods a day to only four extended periods will obviously impact class size. Well, this may not be a significant issue in the near term. With declining elementary enrollment, it won't be sustainable and support the team concept, if and when we get back to the current enrollment levels. There are budgetary implications that will be very difficult to wrap your arms around. I'm running out of time, let me end by saying it's a massive change. When organizations look to make changes of that magnitude, it's critical to have buy-in from stakeholders. There are many that are still open to making the change, but there are many outstanding questions and issues that make the thought about doing so for the next school year ambitious at best. I argue it is disruptive, ineffective, unnecessary. I agree, there's a fair amount of risk and panic in this change, but some would like to fix it plain and clear.
I already gave you, like, 30 seconds over already.
You didn't give me 30 seconds.
Ms. Brandt, weren't you holding up that sign for a while? Not, not, not even.
Can you send us the comments?
Yeah, if you have them written down. Thank you.
Jane Vigliotti, sixth and seventh grade teacher at Fairfield Woods Middle School. Any Google search for average attention span of 10 to 12-year-olds does not ever, ever support 88 minutes. The most I've been able to find is 36 minutes. I also have a study from 2016 that says students go off task more often as instructional activity increases beyond 10 minutes. So, that's a more current study. Our children don't have recess. The passing of classes gives them at least three minutes to actually move their bodies and get a little bit of social interaction. That will disappear with an 88-minute period. I'm a world language teacher, I'm also a former elementary school teacher, so I've taught math. Daily contact with the content, daily practice with the content is crucial in math and world language. That will disappear. Students will not see any one teacher every day. I am, I have, I had a homeroom last year, I usually have a homeroom. That point of contact where I meet with my kids, I have them journal with me, we look at things, we talk about things, is crucial for that sense of connection. Where is their point of connection? Absences. If a teacher misses a day, how are you going to get a sub that's willing to come in and take in, take over 88-minute classes? If a student misses a day, they miss a lot of content and practice. If you add in a teacher absence or a student absence and a snow day, and you don't go back to that day, you just move on, what happens to our pacing? How do we implement the full curriculum by just missing days? Especially in world language, we now have standardized testing, and math, they have standardized testing. With days lost, whether student, teacher days lost, or snow days, where does that time get made up? We're already losing academic time. I just don't see how that's going to work. I mean, we'll make it work, we always do, it's just going to be harder on the kids, and that's who I'm here for.
Thank you.
Jeff DeRozier, 15 Old Stratfield Road, Fairfield, Connecticut, and I'm a music teacher at Fairfield Woods Middle School. I know that you noticed that there's a large change in the number of music minutes, and I know that Mr. Cummings had a meeting with the music department regarding the change in minutes. It's obviously a drastic difference compared to our previous schedule, and it amounts to about 21 rehearsals over the course of the year. If you've noticed, our music department usually puts out a pretty decent product. If you combine the two high schools, we send the most students to If you combine the two high schools, we send the most students to all-state throughout all of Connecticut through the music department. And I know that the music teachers are very, very anxious about the proposed schedule, as we talked about. I provided Mr. Cummings with a few different options, different schedules over the course of the last month or so, that would alleviate some of the time discrepancy with the current schedule. There's still a lot of stress related to that because we haven't really heard or, or seen any movement on that. I would encourage you to look at the support of the community for the music department here in Fairfield, and realize that the teacher buy-in right now is very low, simply in our department, because we have no idea what the future looks like for us. Thank you.
Bob Smoller, I'm the president of the Fairfield Education Association, and really what I wanted to do is just give a snapshot for how teachers are feeling right now on the middle school schedule. You know, for us, it's really two issues. One is the decision to move forward, and that's clearly in the purview of Mr. Cummings and the building administrators. They have been nothing but fabulous in their willingness to dialogue with us on the issues. And, you know, clearly, they've done some research, we've done some research too, there's some differences about whether it's good or not good, but we respect their decision on this issue. But I did want to let you know, and I think it's been referenced before, the buy-in right now isn't quite there. You've only got about fourteen percent of the faculty at the middle school level who are really ready to go. The rest of the group, thirty percent, are against it or have major, and about fifty-six percent have major questions. And that's because we're very early in the process right now, and there are so many open questions, that it's hard to really see how this is going to come to fruition on September first next year. Of larger issue to the FEA, though, is that this get implemented with fidelity. And that's, that's the concern right now, is that we don't have any implementation plans in place right now. There's a huge amount of detail that is unaddressed at this point in time, that we're anxious to see how that's going to look. Some of the major concerns are the curricular, instructional, and pacing effect. I'm at the high school level, and there were major curricular and pacing implications when we did move to the block schedule. We anticipate there's going to be likely more impact at the middle school level as well. Significant concerns about what this intervention and enrichment block is going to look like. We certainly don't want this turning into a study hall or a huge student management issue. Big concerns about class size, when you move from five classes to four. Concerns about staffing equity, who's going to be actually teaching these intervention blocks? Is that going to fall on the math teachers and language arts teachers primarily? You know, how is that going to end up working out? So these are the kinds of comments that came through when we surveyed our members. And then, of course, you heard about the music. So, we are cautiously optimistic about what is to come, but for our standpoint, we're very, very concerned that this get implemented with fidelity, and there are so many open concerns right now, it's too early to say whether this is something that teachers can be enthusiastic about. So right now, there's a lot of reticence. We are in dialogue with Mr. Cummings, who's been fabulous, as I say, but I would say that there's a lot of questions, a lot of questions, and we look forward to seeing an implementation plan on how this is all going to come to fruition. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, I'm Nick Albano, nineteen ninety-five Mill Plain Road. First and foremost, thank you so much to Mr. Dwyer for all the years he's given to this community, to this Board, as a teacher in the district. Forever indebted, thank you so much for all your time and energy. I think the music program in this town is what makes the Fairfield Public Schools truly amazing in the state of Connecticut. I think it makes us one of the top schools in the state of Connecticut. And I'm so proud to be a member and faculty member of that department and, and work towards offering our community something that I think is truly special. As such, I would like to invite all of you to a concert on November seventh at Fairfield Lolo High School at seven-thirty. It's the Veterans Day Concert. Often, we have concerts that we put out for the community, and we see a lot of our students' parents attend, which is fantastic. But for these community events, and this is really a community event, it would be great if the Board of Ed could be there, and beyond just you guys, reach out to your family members and the family members that you know that have served, served in the armed forces, because that concert is really for them. So I just wanted to put that on your radar, because I heard a lot of dates going around of future events. But as I'm sitting here, I'm thinking, well, let me make sure everyone knows about that event. And you can see firsthand, one of the many ways I think the program gives back to the community, so I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know we don't usually comment on public comment, but the Veterans Day Concert, it, I've had children sing for eight years of Fairfield Lolo, it is my favorite concert. I'm, I think even better than Candlelight, just because of the community involvement, and if you know a veteran, they should definitely come to this concert. They play the service songs for every veteran stand-up, it's a great event. So, spread the word. With that, motion to adjourn. Ms. Leeper, seconded by Mr. Dwyer, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.